Everyone, I have your attention. Welcome, everyone. My name is Jay Frapery and I'm chairing the Yarmouth zoning board of appeals meeting tonight. Welcome. The board of selectmen are actually in the hearing room downstairs, so that's why we're having it upstairs. Apologize for the tightness of the room, but we're going to do our best to accommodate you. So, we won't be... It's not a live meeting today, but we are filming it, so it will be on for video. So, it is being recorded. So, now we'll convene the January 12th meeting of the Yarmouth Board of Appeals. We begin by taking a roll call forum. John Mantoni.
Dave.
Doug Campbell.
Here.
Dick Neat.
Speaking.
And Jay Frapery, here. So, given that we have four members, we have a quorum, and we'll now call the meeting to order. Just for everyone's information, we do have four members tonight. I just wanted to make sure everybody realized that the normal would be five. So, if there's any issues with any of the petitions that come before us, we need to have unanimous approval from the board in order to be able to accept. I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that, and we can discuss that issue if we have it when we come up. Okay? So, the first petition is petition 4982, Allison Bailey and Joseph Audette, 4438, Route 3A, Yarmouth, Port, Mass. Map and lot number 123-63, zoning district R40. The applicant seeks a special permit per 407.2.2, indoor variance from 407.2.7, to create a family-related accessory apartment and to exceed maximal allowed square feet. May you return?
I'm returning. So, I'm Allison Alessi, and with A3 Architects. We were here, I believe, in October, and the proposed project was over 800 square feet, although we had some discrepancies in how we calculated square footage. We did clarify that with the building commissioner, so what we brought here tonight, we did scale the project back a little bit. If you know, it's minor, but if you remember, this is a replica of a barn that was knocked over during a storm. We removed the dormer on the third floor, so I think that it's more of a replica of what was there, and we're reducing the amount of area that we're using on the third floor, so it is no longer over the 800 square feet that's allowed, it's under 800 square feet. I think I got some comments about the furniture, so we did try to show some furniture in this drawing, how we're laying out the apartment, but I'd be happy to take questions if you have any.
I guess we'll go around, just go through and see if anyone has any questions. Doug, you want to start?
Yeah, the question I have is like the square footage.
Yeah.
How did you rectify that?
Well, so I think I said I went and met with the building commissioner, I wanted to make sure we're on the same page about how we calculate square footage. I'm obviously stamping the drawings, I'm a design professional. So, we counted the second floor outside, so that's 26 by 26, the whole area, and then we kind of carved and counted this small mudroom on the first floor, and there's a small storage loft on the third floor, so that's how we came to the, just under 800 square feet.
Is there going to be steps? There aren't going to be steps going up to the loft?
Correct.
Is there not a pull-down or anything like that?
Not a pull-down.
Okay. And it's still, is it still 242 square feet, more than 800? Is it still 1,000.2?
No, it's less than 800 square feet.
Seven ninety-six.
Yeah.
That's all I have right now.
Thank you.
John?
I don't have anything. I was here at that previous meeting. The commissioner said it's outside dimensions, correct?
He did, and I don't want to get into an argument about how we do it.
Yeah, no, no, that's how I always...
But that's how we always do it, too.
Right, I agree.
And I think at the last meeting, there was some talk about, and I started drawing lines, and it's really messy for us to calculate like that, so that's why I thought it made sense to talk to Mark.
Very good. No, I'm on set. Appreciate you reducing the square footage.
Dick? So, the first floor is just for boat storage, car storage?
Correct.
There's no living quarters at all on the first floor?
Correct.
None intended?
I'm sorry, no, there's a small area, the mudroom, which is counted as conditioned space as part of the apartment above.
So, they counted that space as part of the... Wow. I would have been more...
Is it heated?
I mean, not really heated, no.
Yeah. Is the first floor heated?
No.
So, it's not really heated then, but... Well, I'm not going to dispute with the inspector for the recalculation. As long as you're under, as long as we have you attesting to the fact that it's seven ninety-six and he's in agreement, I don't have any problem with it, because it's certainly within the scope of the bylaw.
Thank you.
Is that it? Nope. I just have one question.
Sure.
It's on your petition. It does mention special permit for 407.2.2. Was that...
You're going to have to forgive me that I'm not an attorney, right? I'm just an architect. So, what, I'm not, I don't remember what that sort of means.
That's what, I thought it had something to do with limited to one. Let me just check.
Thank you. I think we got a letter from the building commissioner, I'm sorry if I wrote it down wrong.
It says only one accessory apartment per lot shall be allowed, isn't it?
Oh, that's a mistake. Yeah, this is the only one.
This is only one anyway, correct?
Right, correct. Sorry about that.
Okay. That's all I had. So, I guess what we'll do is move on, see if there's any comments or anybody in the audience for this petition? In favor? No? Does anyone in the audience care to speak in opposition to the petition? Nope, doesn't sound like it. So, I guess we close the public input and open it up for board discussion. Anybody like to...
I'll start off, because I did not attend the first session of this hearing, or the previous petition, I guess it was. And I don't see any reason not to, but certainly within the scope of the bylaw, meets the square footage requirement. The building looks very attractive. Have you been a historic yet?
We have.
Yep, and approved by them?
Yes, actually, we changed that dormer, but I make sure we spoke with the chair about that, and he signed off administratively with that change.
Fine. No, it looks great, I have no problem.
John?
I would agree. I agree.
Okay, well, I agree. Thank you very much for working on getting it within the bylaw.
Sure.
We appreciate that. That was a big challenge, I think that was the main reason. Given that, does anybody like to make a motion?
I would make a motion that we approve as submitted.
Okay.
On second.
Okay.
I presume you explained that when they, at the other petition, at the other hearing, we've been pretty hard-nosed about that.
Eight hundred, eight hundred square feet, sure, I understand.
And just to accept from it at this stage will be very difficult, I think, for the previous applicants that we did not.
So, let me just do a roll call vote. Doug?
I'm in favor.
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm in favor also, so it passes for the... You're familiar with, we, you have to wait 20 days?
Sure.
And we'll write up something, you can pick it up, and then take it to Barnstable?
Perfect.
Get it submitted as due and bring it back for registration.
Great, we'll do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck with the project.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, so the next petition is petition 4990, Roger Ricker and Donna LaCroy. Am I correct?
Hi, yes.
21 Franklin Street, West Yarmouth, Massachusetts. Map and lot number 22.257, zoning district R25. The applicant seeks a special permit per 104.3.2.2, indoor variance from 203.5, for front side, front and side setback relief, to add new exterior basement access stair and door, and extend roof over stairs, over a front stair. Welcome?
Thank you, I'm Donna LaCroy.
Donna?
I'm one of the applicants. My husband, Roger, is not here.
So, if you don't mind, if you could tell us about what you're going to do, and what you want to do, and...
And Linda is the architect.
Okay.
And here as well.
Thank you. Good honesty.
So, Dave and I bought this property two years ago and have been working on doing some renovations. Currently, the basement has no external access at all. The only access to the basement is a small doorway in a hallway. So, we are working not only to do this, but also to renovate a kitchen and bath at the same time, to make the property more functional. So, for two reasons, we're asking for the basement door access, one for safety, and the second for access, to be able to use the basement for storage purposes. As part of the renovations that we're working on, the, we'd like to add the two-foot overhang over the front door, again for kind of practical purposes, for rain cover when you're accessing the front door. So, I understand it is represented, and I apologize, this is not my expertise, as an extension to the roof, but it's really a small modification, hopefully, for the purposes of protection for those guests that come to the front door. So, Linda, did I hit on the right things here?
Is there anything else you'd like to add?
I think Donna summarized it perfectly, yeah.
All right. Start from the other side. Dick, you want to start this time?
Yeah. I wasn't able to spend a great deal of time reviewing this or visit the site, as I usually do, but I wondered, the plan is so detailed about a lot of things, but not the setback requirements. And I don't understand why there's not a number from the extended portion of that front door to the street to give us an idea what the setback is of the building from the street.
Are you speaking...
Is that in compliance with the bylaw?
My understanding is that a two-foot overhang is already within the guidelines, but...
But we don't know what the, is that, is that, does that say 31 feet?
Yes.
Thirty-one, very faintly there.
Thirty-one from the left corner, right.
Okay. So, from that corner, so you're going to be 29.1, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
And we need 30, so we're looking for a very small variance for that, right? The 30-foot setback?
Yes.
And from... Okay, and from the other side, we don't have any setbacks showing, and that would be a 30-foot setback as well. Is it two streets?
Are you speaking of Franklin Street?
So, existing now is 27.1 from that far corner, and you're not going to extend anything on that side. Is that correct?
There would be an overhang on that side.
Is it showing?
Are you speaking of the Berry Avenue side?
I'm speaking on the Berry Avenue side.
Right. There is a proposed two-foot overhang over that entrance doorway.
It's shown on the Franklin Street side, but not on the Berry Avenue side.
There is one here on...
Yeah, it changes here and it goes right to it.
It's in elevation, if that's easier to see.
Proposed entry overhead, okay. Over a section of that new addition. It's just the section of the new addition?
Outside the front, yes. Outside the existing face of wall there.
And that would be, so that would bring the setback to the street from 27.1 to approximately 25.1, is that correct?
Actually, in that case, the overhang is outside of that 27-foot one. From the face of wall to Berry Ave is 31 feet, minus two would be 29 feet.
Where do you get 30?
If you look at the elevations, oh, I see what you're saying. So, that is, that 27-foot one is to the existing deck edge, but the face of the existing house is beyond that.
Oh, I see, goes into the house, okay. So, you've got two feet.
So, you see two, you see two steps there?
Three feet there?
Yeah, yeah. Four feet.
Three or four?
Four feet, because it's 31 from the face of house to Berry Ave. It might even be a little easier to look at the elevations.
You know, that's one of the most important things that this plan should show, since that's the one you're looking for, really.
We were overlaying the new, site, the new survey, site plan with the architectural plan. I apologize for the confusion there.
So, is this approved by a land surveyor or...
Yes.
Yes, and those certified plot plans were submitted with the application.
Is there one here tonight?
Well, we submitted one separately, the certified plot plan, and then...
Because usually we don't even look at these unless we have a certified plot plan.
I believe that's this large one right here.
That's the large, okay.
Right.
But this one doesn't show the Berry Avenue cover, does it?
Mr. Campbell, may I overlook over your shoulder on this chest area? I'm sorry.
I think he's talking about...
Yeah, right. Focus, I'm sorry, the survey doesn't show that. Here's the one on Franklin Street, and here's the one within the stair.
Right.
So, you'd have to look at the architectural for that. This would be a two-foot projection right there.
Where it says fire pit?
Yes, yes, that side.
In that direction?
Yes.
So, it's going to be like even with the, like, addition, is there a proposed addition?
Yeah, there's a, there's a face of wall right to here, we're going to fill in that gap flush, and so it would be two foot beyond that existing building face. My apologies, but it's not in the survey.
I can't believe that you don't show it on the plan, and that's...
I'm sorry, it's on the architectural side, I was unaware that it was not on the plot plan.
That would be the first place you should look, I would think. All right, that's all I have for now. I hate to be a stickler, but...
No, 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 I understand, I understand.
That's, I think clearly pointed out in the instructions, that we want to see a certified plot plan that shows all the relief you're looking for, and this doesn't.
My understanding in the beginning was that the two-foot overhangs were already in compliance, but that was what we learned was going to be added to the variance.
You knew that before the hearing, though, right?
Correct, yes.
Yes.
We understood the bulk of the variance appeal to be regarding the stair.
It's not the bulk, we have to approve or disapprove the whole.
Got it, got it.
And that's not there.
So, you have a full basement now, or not?
Well, it's not under the whole house, but it's under the main section of the house.
And so, the entrance is on the right, the other, correct? This is going to be the end, stairway and entrance into the basement?
That's the new, yeah, closed entrance, yeah. I can show you an outline, the existing basement is under this portion of the house. Everything else is slabbed, I'm good.
I'm sorry, which part?
I'm sure we're ready, right in here.
Yes.
So, here's the entrance.
Just the square, just that part.
Yeah, the original square.
And then the addition, what is the addition?
The proposed addition?
Yes.
It's an eight-by-eight, roughly eight-by-eight square. It will be a laundry room.
Okay, laundry, yeah, gotcha, all right.
And what we're doing is we're gutting the kitchen, a bathroom, and the small laundry area now, and we're extending it out.
Okay. All right. And then, so the...
But there's a door there, too, going outside?
Yes, from the laundry room, the current laundry room. It's kind of like a back hallway that has washer dryer and...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, right.
So, the stairs going down, what is the width of that? Am I missing that?
Four foot, four foot eight, four foot eight and a half.
Five, yeah.
Half to eight, yeah.
Okay, so is that 14, 14.6 is right now, and then it's... Minus five, should be nine and a half or something, right?
Correct, yes.
I don't have any other questions.
Is the fire pit there now?
Yes.
Or is it, okay, I'm just, I mean, is, are they going to have enough room to get into the back to, for the septic or anything like that? Because I noticed the septic system is in the backyard. Is the nine feet, I mean, is that going to be enough for, you're not going to drive over the fire pit area, I'm just taking, I don't know.
That would leave about eight foot wide for a mini cat to get back there if necessary.
Is the basement of, like, a four-foot crawl space, or is it actual, can you stand down there? You can stand down there in position?
It's a standing down, yes, yes.
It's a net four of a...
When I drove by the property, that side, it has a nice fence, and I really don't think, I mean, I like the access, it's nicely done, I don't know, really know about the overhang over here, it should be here, but it's an overhang. I don't know, I don't like to have access to a basement, I just don't, I don't think that's, that's too bad, that's just my opinion.
And also?
That's it.
So, I think the one on Berry Street, the one that you're talking about there, it doesn't, it's no, our concerns are, you know, additional or more extensive variances needed based on setbacks. The one on Berry Street doesn't look like it's going to be more extension. The one on the front house, which is two feet, 29 feet, I don't really see a problem with that. The side one, though, I'm a little concerned about, the stairs. Only reason is because that reduces the variance target exists. We try to avoid that at all costs. Have you talked to your neighbors at all? I know there's a fence there, I went by and did look at it. Did your neighbors give you any feedback on this change?
The three neighbors that directly, one across the street, Steve Clayton next door, who owns the fence.
Okay, that's, okay, clear.
And Cindy behind us have expressed no issues.
No concerns.
I invited Steve to come tonight. He said to me, and I'm paraphrasing, is, "I'm not even going to see it, it's below ground."
I know, it's, yeah, it's all down, down below.
Is it, is that wooden, or is that concrete?
That was a poured concrete stair.
Poured concrete, that's what it looked like, it was going to be, yeah. That's the one that I would be most concerned about, would be the side setback relief, because it's already within, it's already less than it's supposed to be, so we're basically making it more of a non-conforming situation.
I see, okay.
But it's below ground.
Yeah, we tried to keep the ridge of that shed at the same level as the real...
Right, and there's a fence there, and I would have loved to have heard from Mr. Clayton directly, that he was okay with it. That would have been my preference, but that's where I would be most concerned, is that side one. The other two, one's not even a change really to the setback, and the other one, two feet just over. And you're on a corner lot, too, which is always something that's always difficult to most people.
Would it be helpful to have a letter from the neighbor?
Well, it is helpful, but too late, yeah.
Oh, I see, I see. I actually thought you would be here tonight, but...
Yeah. But the fence and everything else, the fact that it's below ground, but let's see if anybody else has anything to say.
Any questions about that, the cover on the, above the door going into the basement?
Okay.
The one on the, on the front of the house, on the Franklin Avenue side, you say was for the guests that come to that door, you expected the guests to come in to the basement door?
No.
Is there any finished space down there?
No.
Why would you need that?
Well, there is a drain at the bottom, and that's just to help from, you know, any kind of water collection down there. It's really just to shelter you while you're unlocking the door if you're coming in from outside.
And it's like almost that grade, it looks like, it's going to be the actual cover?
Yes.
It's going to be above the door, which is down below ground?
Yes.
Even with grain?
Yeah, you can see that in elevation.
And just, I can't imagine going down on a rainy day saying, "Oh, I've got to go to the basement," and go that way. Just seems like strange thing. Okay, that's all I have. I still have some concerns about what we see before versus what's been proposed, and there's a fairly consistent policy to see on a plan what we're going to end up with, so there's no disputing in the future. And I can't believe that you're coming for relief that you don't show that.
Understood.
And I understand your situation as the architect versus somebody else who's the engineer, but somebody else had to be looking at this before you came to us, and I think you should have that.
No, understood.
And if it takes a continuance to get it, then I think we need to do that, because I'm not prepared to vote favorably for this until we have the plan from us.
Okay, meaning we would ask the survey engineer to add that on to his plan, correct?
So, we have it in our record, so that there's no disputing later on for whether you have permitting for that.
That's to protect you as much as anything else, too.
Understood.
So, given that, I can, we can still go to see if there's any public comment, not that I know that there will be, but in the meantime, too, if we do that, you might look at the letter.
Okay.
That would be helpful, but just to see if there's any, anybody in the public that would like to speak out in favor of this petition? I'm hearing any, if anyone would like to speak out in opposition to this petition. I guess then we close it to the public. Open it up for board discussion.
I'll differ.
Dick, express some, you have something to say.
I have some concern about what's on the plan versus what they're asking for.
Yep.
I know you have some concern about the sideline encroachment underground, but I'm not thrilled, or not convinced that you need that cannon-levered door overhang for a basement door going into an unfinished basement. I think it's attractive-looking, but who's going to see it? I mean, nobody's on that side of the house, unless they're going down the stairs, but I...
It's just to protect you from the rain, I would assume.
It's just for protection, yeah.
Umbrella works, too.
And symmetry.
John, Emily?
Yeah, I don't have, I agree with Dick that the plans need to be correct.
Yeah, they do.
Other than that, I don't have any problem with the stairs going down in the basement, or the overhang, or anything else, really. I would like to see this correct, and I agree with Mr. Dettie.
Okay. Yeah, I think it's important that we do get a correction of the plans before we get anything, so I think if, if we were going to continue this, I know we have, we have date issues.
March 9.
Well, you have plenty of time, so I think the best thing to do would be if we vote to have a continuance to March 9. And if you could provide a corrected set of plans, and it wouldn't hurt if you could get a letter from Mr. Clayton also.
I'm happy to do that.
Since he's on that side of the house, it certainly would make it, make it that much easier for all of us. All right? And if you're in agreement, we can vote on a continuance. Is that what we do, I think, correct? Vote on continuances? So, do a roll call vote. Doug?
I'll agree for the continuance. Aye.
John?
Aye.
Aye, and aye.
Thank you.
Grant you that. You do have to sign it, too, if you're going to continue this, you will have to sign the continuance if you're pressed. Hopefully, we have it.
We have it. We just, and date.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, great, you for your time. Our apologies for the inconsistency, it's on the architecturals.
It happens.
I missed it on the survey, I might have, we'll get that corrected.
I think for the future, you'd be grateful.
Absolutely, no, I understand. The 12th, the 13th?
12.
12.
12.
Thank you, very much. Anything else? So, when we get the corrected, so, or just bring it to the office for you, what's the process?
Yeah, deliver, deliver it just like you would when you did the petition, so you, you can bring it to Dolores downstairs. Just give her, if you could, the letter and the plan, and she'll put it into the package for us, so that we'll get the packet when you come back.
Do the architectural drugs need to be updated, postdated, or can they remain as is, architectural symmetry?
They show it.
They show it, yeah.
Yeah, they show it. It's just the certified block plan, that's, yeah, they can show it, as far as I'm concerned.
And how many copies, certified copies, do you need?
Six.
And is there any formal procedure for getting on your March calendar date, or?
We're plugging you in right now, I think.
Yay, thank you. You could just send a PDF to us, we can share that.
Great.
And is there a deadline for submitting it in time for the meeting? I want to be sure I tell the.
January 18.
No.
Wait, March 1, excuse me, February 15. Earlier would be great, too.
Oh, yeah.
She likes to be fully prepared early.
Me, too.
Yeah. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So, the next item on our agenda is petition number 4991, Jeffrey and Michelle Jumper. Welcome.
Hello.
Hello.
Let me just read this. Seventeen Road, South Yarmouth, Mass, Massachusetts, map, lot number 101.151, zoning district R40. The applicant seeks a special permit per 104.3.2.2 and/or variance from 203.5 for side setback relief to construct 16 by 35 foot pool and required setback on an undersized, pre-located lot. Welcome. If you could tell us something about your petition and describe it for us, we'd appreciate it.
Sure. We are seeking a variance for a setback less than 20 feet, trying to get 10 feet off both neighbors for 16 by 35 pool. It's really the only possible space we can use. So that's really what we're looking at.
Okay.
And it has unique topography, so it's.
Very unique.
Very challenging in all directions.
Yeah, it's not a lot today. Just, yeah.
It's been going on in our head for a very long time.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to say about it, or?
It is unique. There's a, a lot of variations that we face with the landscape that drops down. We're the lowest point in the neighborhood. The road is up above us.
Great Western.
Yes, the topography climbs up that direction. We have a septic on the back, right on the.
It's kind of everything.
In the front corner? That's at the Kane Road front corner?
Leaching fields in the front there.
Oh, leaching field, yeah.
And there's no space on the other side, so it's really the only possibility we have.
Yeah, the other side is a steep slope as well.
And then the driveway obviously goes out right where 59 is on the page, that's where the driveway is.
Well, just, just to make everyone aware, we were just joined by another member of our, our commit, our board.
The special board.
Mr. Martin will join us.
Never had an appointment in Boston at 2:00.
Welcome back from Boston. But, welcome. So we now have five, which is a good thing.
Yeah, so we only need four now.
Yeah.
Makes it easier.
Makes it easier to win.
You need it for the fourth, so welcome.
Hasn't changed.
Hopefully you're lucky for.
Now, now you need four out of five instead of four out of four. All right, so, oh, identify yourself. All right, so what, any questions from the board? You want to start with Doug this time? I'll give Dick a chance to get settled.
Yeah, I noticed the shed is off the property. Is that going to be moved, or?
There's plans for that, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Probably when this all happens would be the ideal time to take care of that.
I'm going to hold off right now.
Okay. John, you want to?
Well, so, the setbacks you have here, from the pool, the edge of the pool to the lot line, and they don't consider, take into consideration the patio or the surround, right? So, I mean, what is the surround going to be? Concrete? Do you know what the material will be?
Not sure yet. We, obviously, financially, this is going to be a lot, too, so we're, we're going to have to decide that as we go. Maybe pavers, stone.
And then I see you've got a fence in there, too. You were able to fit a fence. So, do you know the distance between the edge of that surround, or the edge of the fence and that lot line? I mean, it looks like we're talking less than two feet.
It's minimal. We were told, basically, we have to have the 10 feet from the, the pool.
The pool, is that what you were told?
Yes.
Yes.
They don't necessarily consider the pavement or any of that.
It's not considered the structure?
Yeah, structural.
The, the decking.
So it's tight. It's, it's basically all, all we have to work with.
I don't know if you said you, you went by it, but the, it's.
Right.
It's kind of like a fishbowl. Everything just kind of goes down in a small area.
I got it already.
So, before, there was a lot, there used to be a lot of trees. This neighbor has taken down all the trees, so it's kind of, you know, really exposed the yard for what it was.
Actually, do you have those?
I, I, yeah, I just saw, yeah, I saw that, yep.
Yeah, I mean, provided, we'll probably have to stamp these pictures in. Yeah, those are.
That's really, it's so barren now with all those trees down there, it looks, you know, we're hoping to maybe put some trees back up to.
Yeah, the idea is to kind of redo the, the greenery.
And, and the fence, what type of fence are you planning on putting in there? Chain link, or stockade, or?
I mean, something, something appealing, but if there are greens that are all here, then that wouldn't be the worst to have a chain link if we had that.
Lock it off.
Or a black metal or something that's, you could see the greenery as opposed to the fence.
Obviously, something pretty attractive. We don't usually, we wouldn't think that chain link would be the first.
Option.
Option. But if you have the greens.
Has to be six feet tall.
Is it six or four, or five? No, five.
I think it's five.
Five.
Retaining wall, is it five feet, or how big is it?
No, the, no.
Fence, fence.
Just, he's talking, speaking of the height of the fence.
So I believe it has to be under eight.
Yes.
I'm all set, thank you.
Dick?
Thank you. Sir, it was fine.
Sir, it's fine? Sir, news?
Haven't been knighted yet. I, I guess I'm a little bit confused about where this is. Is that Great Western?
That's looking to, yeah, that is Great Western.
Okay.
That is our neighbor's property, all the, the dark.
All this is in here?
Yes.
That's her.
Great place with pool. Can't you work something out with that?
She has a leaching field there, actually.
Ah, okay, okay.
These, these lot lines are so crazy to begin with. Our, our lot pinches to a corner, and just the visual topography.
Did, did you add on to this, or was it built? I mean, this is.
In 2008, we reconstructed and built another.
On the footprint, though. The footprint is the same.
On the footprint, on the original footprint.
Yeah.
So you have not extended the original footprint from when it was built?
That's the exact footprint of the house.
And the shed that's in question, that's on the neighbor's property, is that this shed?
That's the little, the square there on the back.
The shed, the shed that's showing behind where the patio is, in the, in the, in the pool?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. So there's another shed, too?
That's actually, yeah, Chicken Coop.
That's, that's a Chicken Coop we've already gone through, Bruce. He came out, he's seen it, he really likes it, he's proud of us.
I saw the two.
Well, where, where are you going to put the other shed? Like, actually, Chicken?
It would probably be, we, I worked with Mark Rills, probably over here on the side of the driveway, we would move that over.
In the front portion, on Kane, Kane Road side?
Assumingly, yeah, over there.
Okay.
I've mapped it out, six feet off, and it still could be attractive there.
They'd even mentioned trying to get a, a variance on this side, but we know we have to move it.
You've got a whole lot of variances here to worry about, I mean, so.
The only thing, this wouldn't need a variance over here, it fits here.
If we went over there, okay.
Yeah. So Mark's very much aware that's, that's the option, we would move that, too.
And are there any, all the septic is underground. Are there any water table issues at all in that area?
We're not in a, we're not in a flood zone or anything.
And we don't even.
Enough, you could be.
I've logged out house many times.
We rarely get any collection there, even in the worst of storms, in that bottom point, where you would think everything would go to.
Yeah.
But, the yard, for some, whatever reason.
There's all sand, man.
That's, that's right, true.
And if we do add the trees, obviously, we would add some, you know, extra terrain that would, you know, help that situation anyways, so.
Had you considered a smaller pool? It would be blunt.
So, we want to be able to, to, to exercise in it. That's, it's one of the big, the big reasons for it. And going through COVID, we, you know, there's a lot of reasons why this was, this is the minimum when you're starting to do laps and things. This is like the normal size that we were told would be.
What's the difference from a lap pool to this pool?
Well, the length, we wanted to be able, we have three kids, a nine, 11, and 14-year-old, and, so there could be up to the five of us, and we wanted to be able to, yeah, swim back and forth and actually get an exercise in it.
Yeah. That's more, that is more, some of the purpose for having it, to be able to exercise in it as well. I'm sure you've seen me probably running around town. Because I'm getting older, so.
Sure, we haven't seen the exercise much in my pool either. Okay, that's all I have for the moment. Mr. Martin?
Yeah. Excuse me, I'm trying, I'm trying to remember, and I meant to look this up and forgot, but the, the pool setback normally on, on a lot has to be what?
Just 20.
So it is 20 feet, so it's looked at it as any, as a structure.
It is a structure.
The pool, yeah, the pool.
The pool itself is a structure. Not the patio structure, the patio is not, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, we're looking at 10 and a half feet instead of the 20 feet, and that eremlies the, the need for relief. Personally, I don't, I don't, I don't find any problem with it. I, I think it's a nice addition to the neighborhood, the way these lots work out, and I think the house, if it's in back view, is way off to the side anyways. I would agree with you that, especially if you have three kids, and if you want a pool to, for them to enjoy, and to be able to swim laps in, I think 35 feet is a, is kind of a minimum, minimum length. Certainly, there are plenty of other pools that date back a little bit to, or to when, you know, ones that were built, well, for instance, when the subdivision was approved, would have been allowed to go six feet from the, six feet from a, either sideline, so that, well, actually, this might be a little, it might have been 10, 10 or 10 feet or whatever at that time. So, I, I don't see any real problem with it. I think it's, as long as the neighbors weren't upset with it, I don't see any issue with it.
Giving that kind of relief.
And that includes the retaining wall designs?
Yep.
That's already.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask about, was the retaining wall. It says it's to be designed by others, but how high is that retaining wall?
It's not going to be over a 40 feet, so we won't need engineering. We have to, we have to work that out.
The plan is to retain on either side, so a little up on the back side and a little up on the front side, to kind of split the difference of that hill.
The highest point's like 14 feet.
I think it's nine.
Going down to about nine feet, so.
At the, yeah, at the lowest.
Oh, I see, 14, yeah.
We'd have to.
Seems like it's pretty close to the septic tank, too, absolutely, nine feet from the septic.
I spoke to Bruce already, and he gave the, the okay on that.
As long as they get into the covers.
He could sign up on that.
I, I, I guess I'm, I'm trying to think like a neighbor, maybe that's not a good idea, but. Do, do you need the patio on the, on the far side of the pool?
Meaning, towards the Great Western side?
I think he means towards the back.
I think the rear.
Right, from, yeah, on, on the, I don't know what the, yeah, that'd be the re, the rear, right? Yeah, yeah. Do you need that patio on that side?
And why do you ask?
Well, I, I think, you're right on the lot line, that's right.
Yeah, there might be a possibility it could be less on that corner, just to kind of, to not fight that line as much. That's not a big issue.
We're not trying to have it right on top of the fence, no matter what, you know.
Yeah, I, I just think from a practical standpoint, I mean, you're not going to want to use such patio if you're right two feet from the line.
Right.
Yeah, you're right there.
I wouldn't, you know.
I think what, what is going on with Downcape is they were just giving us that amount, so if we need it, it's there. For us, we're looking to probably plant some trees a little bit.
Yeah, we're probably going to have, excuse me, we're going to want trees over there, so, you know, assumingly, that patio wouldn't go as far, because we're going to need a tree there.
So how wide is it right now? I mean, do you know how wide this is actually?
Nine feet anyway.
Yeah, it looks, it looks to be about nine-ish. We did not, we did not specify what the patio decking would be, and I don't think the engineer was concerned, because he said it wasn't a structure, it was something movable.
So if we did put a condition in for a certain width, you'd be willing to take that?
On that back side, right then, the corner? Yeah, I would, I would think so.
They want to have more green over there, grass and plants than patio that you're not going to use.
I agree. That's kind of, I, you know.
Certainly, that corner, especially that corner where it seems to peek over, you could put a contingency there on the patio, the decking.
And we just have to see, you know, where all this lies?
Well, I, I understand that, but we, we also have to decide.
We have, we'll see it, too.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, we can't just leave the door open and.
Right, no, I understand that.
I have a problem with this, you know, to be honest with you. I think it's an undersized lot, the pool is too big for the, the back, the back is wide open to all the neighbors to see. The kids are having friends over, birthday party, it's going to be loud nuisance. You really got to get, if we approve this, it has, the shed's got to move, there's going to be some serious buffer, and I'm thinking maybe a smaller pool. That's, that's me, too. That's just my thoughts on this.
So, quick, quick response to that. That neighbor behind us, her grandkids are always sleeping over, so they're excited about the pool, actually.
What about the next people? If they sell it, you know, that's what I'm thinking, going to broke future down.
Her, her child is, her daughter, who's 50, is buying the house, they've told us. So, that's all we know so far, right?
Yeah, no, I understand, for sure.
I'd love to have my Cypress about 60 feet tall, to be honest.
Yeah, we never used to see their house, now we have a nice.
All that, that's open, and if you look.
We certainly want to have trees along that line.
Why did they do that? Why did they do that?
She, she's older, and they, the fall and winter raking leaves.
She does not.
That's one way to get rid of it.
She finally, well, if you look at the pictures, there were no trees on Great Western for about a year and a half, or two years.
No, I took the pictures.
Before she.
I have both, but that's in my phone. This was never here, so the entire road was just shining right into our backyard, and you could see in our windows, but in the last couple months, she just put those up, so.
And those aren't the ivies, are they?
Those are Cypress.
Cypress, so that'll be good, when they start filling in. And that's kind of what we wanted to do.
Kind of what we're looking to do.
So it doesn't go through.
Yeah, we have, we have a bunch that are on, they've been there for about 10, 15 years.
But, yeah, the, the intention is to also get a nice coverage between the two houses, like you said, to create some, some section, the two houses on.
Ideally, I wish we weren't as low as we were, and I would love to be able to just start growing them, and have them 30 feet would be fine, but, yeah, we're going to have to buy them again.
Have to be patient.
Mr. Martin, do you have any other questions?
Nope. No, I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with it. It's, there's lots of pools on small lots. This isn't too small a lot. I mean, we've got pools on 6, 7, 8,000 square foot lots, so this is almost 16,000, so I'm not too uncomfortable with that. Like I said, as long as there wasn't a, a direct response from an affected neighbor negatively, then I wouldn't, I think it's, I think it's a fine use of the property.
I have a couple of questions. Get organized, sorry about that. So, I didn't see the lot size, is it 1,600 square feet?
15,903.
Oh, just looking at the lot. Need to see it. Thank you. And, there's not, you didn't have to get a special permit or variance or any, oh, there's a question I had on special permit or variance. I wasn't sure exactly what they needed. I didn't know, we'll have to go through and talk about that a bit, but, I don't know, Dick, can you give me feedback on what you think? Is this a special permit or a variance?
I think it's a special permit.
You do? I was reading it, I wasn't sure if it needed a variance because of the.
It's a new structure and.
It's a new structure, it's not really a.
Yeah.
Sideline, it's a special permit.
It's not an addition. You know, it might be a variance, now that I think of it, yeah.
I kind of live leaning that way, so I just wanted to ask. Which makes it more difficult, but.
Not to say we always do that, right?
No, I know. Well, we try to be consistent.
But I, I think actually a variance is correct, yeah.
That was the first thing I had. I know you had both listed, but a variance requires kind of a higher bar.
Yeah, it does have a higher criteria.
We've kind, we've been through this for a couple of years.
Yeah.
And between engineering and Mark Rills, everybody, they 100% weren't sure, so they Wills, everybody, they a hundred percent weren't sure, so they said go for both.
Yeah, that's what he really does.
What else does that-
Put it on you.
He gives us that all the time so that we can knock one out.
Right.
So I have, we do have some notes that came from some neighbors, I'll read those in a second. Current setup proposed, neighbors' lives. I had a question on the pictures.
Okay.
The current, the shed I know shows it as off your property today, and in this picture that shows the shed, can you give me a description, I mean, there's a little fire pit there, so is the, is the current lot line, where is it in relation to that fire pit? Can you tell?
I just moved that, to be honest.
It would follow the weeds, if you look at the brown weeds.
The end of that fence, and follow those weeds, and actually, I can show you here.
Goes all the way out to the end of this fence here, is that what you're saying?
Is that where the round?
So yes, so if you look here, if I were to, see if I can put this better for everybody, sorry that you're not, Mr. Martin. Our line goes, let's see where, so it goes like this, and there's our bedroom window, and that's where that line goes.
That's on the road.
Yeah, that's on Great Western.
Right, I'm more concerned about-
No, this is Great Western.
Oh, I'm sorry, here we are, right here.
That's the line I'm concerned about.
My fault, sorry. So it goes like that.
Well, it's the bottom line.
Yeah, that one.
It's the line that's there.
It's right out, it's right out of, it's the craziest lot line.
No, I understand what you're saying, but I'm just trying to get a sense and picture, because it shows the shed right now-
Kind of just follow right in front of that across.
And goes all the way to this fence?
Yes, yeah.
So the end of that fence is the end of your lot? So a lot of the shrubbery that's shown here is-
No, I think so, I think it's the dirt, the weeds.
That is really the view you have of our backyard.
If you follow those, that brush, that's kind of the line that goes straight across here, and then right in front of that shed goes straight across there.
If you look at this picture, that's really where our lot is, that's what you see, you're looking at the room.
No, I saw it, I'm just trying to understand how far in the lot line is.
It's in front of, right in front of the shed.
In front of the shed. And it goes all the way to the end of the fence.
Correct, right outside the bedroom window, really.
So most of that shrubbery that's shown today is on your property.
Yeah, that's where the trees arch, we want to put the trees.
It's about, it's about six feet in.
Inside of the shrub, inside of the-
The line is behind them, on our side.
Behind them, okay.
Yeah, because I actually sculpted those down because they were growing, and it made me see where our line, how it would look, so I kind of cut them down to make it, like that would really be what it would look like. But yeah, they're uniquely growing there.
Yeah, I was just trying to understand it in relation to that fire pit.
It's in front of the shed.
The shed has been there for-
It's been there since 2008.
Yeah, like-
We do have the building permit.
Not known long before 2008, so.
Long before you arrived.
At least been like eighteen years, no, when we got there.
It was there when you got there?
It's been there for eighteen years.
The shed was there when you got there?
No, the shed was not there when we got there.
Okay, so you put the shed there.
You put the shed there.
Yeah, they're different neighbors, and yes, we talked-
Well, any neighbor might object if you put the shed on their land.
When we had done it, we, we thought it was, that, so when we bought this house, our realtor had given us different lines, we've made mistakes a lot of the lines.
Don't you want to do that?
(laughing).
Easy realtor.
The three in the room.
Bottom line is, she said-
Watch it, watch it.
She said where the landscape goes is where yours are, so we didn't have the survey done at that time, but we talked with our neighbor, and they said that works fine with us, and then these neighbors have bought, and it was fine for about six, seven years, and then she was worried a little bit about it, so.
If you look at our land, it kind of, it's funny, it looks like it's part of our thing, it's this nice line, and then it goes up a hill, and then hers starts, but it's just not the case. The land doesn't match the lines.
You bought the house, you got a mortgage?
Yes.
And there should have been a certified lot plan done when you bought it, right?
I don't remember the details, I do know we were wrong.
Put it this way, we were first time buyers, and we should have been a little more smart on that line because we probably wouldn't be there today.
I don't know if we would have bought this house, to be honest.
And then we did a lot to it, and then we realized where our lines-
I have a building permit for this shed that's dated in 2008, so does that sound, does that sound right?
Yeah, that should be, that's what you do.
Because that's what I asked.
Is it eight? Well, it has to be if it's a permit.
No, it was before that.
Signed by, says the shed, one hundred and twenty square feet, ten, ten, oh, eight.
Yeah, I don't know.
Looks like it's-
Doesn't show any diagram of the position.
It's at least that, that's for sure, yeah.
So it's been there that long?
Yes.
And how long, do you own the property?
Two thousand, the end of 2004, so almost 2005.
December of 2004.
Okay. All right, does anybody else have any questions, and I'll open it up to the public.
I think that's important over here.
All right, anybody here in support of this proposal that would like to speak? Any, it might be, let me just check, I think there was a, I think there was, okay, we did have one letter that came in, um, two letters.
That is a letter of support from-
One more, sorry.
Can we borrow your letter?
Sounds like yours is better than ours.
All right, is there anybody here that would like to speak in opposition to this? I do have a letter, so I'll read the letter, actually, there's three different ones, but.
Same as butter.
Same as butter, at fifteen Payne Road, which I believe is the next door neighbor on the side of that fence. Basically, I am concerned about the application, it's dated January ninth. Dear Yarmouth Board of Appeals-
We'll see you this afternoon.
Okay, well, right, we see you today. I am concerned about the application documents and history of issues with the jumpers' property lines and the town of Yarmouth. In 2008, the town issued a permit for jumpers to construct a shed on their property, the shed was then constructed on the neighbor's property and somehow inspected and approved by the town. When the neighbors whose property the jumpers had taken looked to the town for help, they were told this was a civil matter and they should hire an attorney. This was a financial burden placed on the neighbors caused by the town and the jumpers. From conversation with our neighbor, we understand a variance was issued to the jumpers to allow the shed to remain on their property, neighbor's property. And I'll check, we checked for a variance, and I didn't find anything, so I just said no.
Can you repeat that last sentence there?
Yeah, it says, from conversation with our neighbor, we understand a variance was issued to the jumpers to allow their shed to remain on their neighbor's property. The variance was issued because the financial burden moving the shed would produce, because of the, because of the financial burden the shed would produce to the jumpers. Before resolving this issue, the town allowed the jumpers to begin this pool application process. The pool proposal drawings were prepared by a professional engineering firm. Somehow, this was a financial burden the jumpers were willing to take on. These top dollar drawings now show the jumpers' shed completely on the neighbor's property. It is very disheartening that the town should allow such abuse of our senior neighbors. I am also concerned with what I have heard is being said by the jumpers. Many of our neighbors have been told they feel this is just a formality because of the connections on the board, they will be granted this allowance. I would hope that this is not true and that the board is honorable and fair in the decision making. With respect, George Mendoza, fifteen Payne Road, South Yarmouth, Mass.
Jorge.
What's that?
Jorge.
Did I say it wrong?
Or George.
Yeah.
He's George.
Is he George?
George Mendoza, yeah.
Tried. January ninth, Gary Yarmouth Board of Appeals, I am writing to voice my concerns, same person but with-
This is, this is George again?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm writing to voice my concerns over the request for special permit or variance to allow pool at seven Payne Road, Yarmouth, Mass. The lot is too small for such a large pool, the pool is too close to our property line. The proposed encroachment is significantly more than the current minimum setback allows. Already before a pool, parking is often overflowing into the street, already at a blind and fast intersection. It is not a safe location to have even more cars. This will be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. This allowance will negatively impact my property. This is not a pre-existing pool, there is reason, the town has zoning regulations, please enforce them. Thank you. George Mendoza. Iteraline?
Listen, that was-
Iteraline, yeah. Fifteen Payne-
I don't know, that might be a different person, but I don't know.
That's George.
Same signature.
Yeah.
One last, one last note, this is from Karen Mendoza.
Same family.
Dated same, arrived today. Dear Yarmouth Board of Appeals, I am writing to voice my concerns over the request for special permit of variance on seven Payne Road, Yarmouth, Mass. The lot does not allow for a pool of the proposed size, the location of the pool is too close to the property line as current zoning regulations allow. There is reason for zoning regulations as they are, as they are, please enforce them. This will adversely infect my property, the proposed placement is a significant encroachment of the property line, our leaching field is beside the proposed pool location, the vicinity to our property will destroy any privacy we have left in our yard, this would increase the value of the jumpers' home while decreasing the values of our neighbors. There is presently no pool on the property, this is self-created hardship, with respect, Karen Mendoza, fifteen Payne Road, South Yarmouth, Mass.
That's from Karen?
Karen.
Okay. She's, that's his ex-wife, that lives-
Has never been there.
She lives near, outside of Boston.
So are they at the butter with the retaining wall?
That's the side, this is the, over the fence, our next door neighbors, not the people behind us.
I would like to bring up about the, I guess, the third paragraph on the larger letter there.
Yeah.
As to this was already brought up and so forth, and needless to say, there was never, he never came before this board, or this, leaving the shed on somebody else's property, because we wouldn't have allowed that.
It's funny.
And I don't think people before us would have allowed it either on the board, so I think that's incorrect in terms of the-
Yeah, it is incorrect, because we checked to see if there's any variance issued for this property, and there weren't, so.
And so that, that I think is, yeah.
He doesn't even communicate with that neighbor, they don't get along either, so it's a little interesting that he's-
He's trying to speak for them. It's really interesting, so the other thing is, when we did our chickens, he went through this whole uproar. He was in seeing them every day, and then in the end, he comes over and he's talking as if nothing happened, and we're like, hey, and he's like, oh, relationships have hiccups. He goes, I never imagined you guys would do such a great job, and I'm just like-
He asked for free eggs?
He does ask for eggs. He has a restaurant, and he asks me for like, he will dozen.
And that's out on Great Western, that's not-
It's not even yours.
Some of the neighbor's concerns also about parking, I mean, you often have a lot of extra cars there.
What are we, raging parties?
Are you party people?
We might have one extra car.
I think you have a two-car garage and a double-wide driver, they're not, right?
It's a little, there's not, I'm going to be honest, there is no excess cars ever on that road, and in fact, the only excess car is the business trucks. First, I'd like to back up, he doesn't even live, he doesn't live next door anymore, he has another house in the neighborhood. This is just a secondary home that no one lives at.
It's maybe an Airbnb, but they're never, not usually there.
It's an Airbnb for him, and I wouldn't even say that, because it's just like, maybe two people. It's kind of bizarre that he's making a huge to-do, but-
Well, thank you for the feedback on the comments.
Thank you.
I guess what I would do though, is if there's nothing else, I close it to public, public input, and open it up to board discussion. Dick?
Yeah, I'm not too worried about that, I mean, I, to be honest with you, I would have trouble saying no to a, to a request like this, based on what we've done in recent history, where we're constantly giving relief to structures, usually in older subdivisions, where the setback, sideline setback would have been much less, not too many years ago, and, you know, we've been giving them up to two feet away from lot lines for structures.
Yep.
Here, we got two and a half feet, and with some proper conditions, like making sure the sheds moved, making sure some plantings are done, and maybe cutting off a corner of the patio there, I think that, I think that what's being asked for here is logical and acceptable in my estimation.
Thank you.
In my opinion, what's being asked for here is not, is not exceptional, I mean, I just think it's too small of a lot, and what they're asking for is just too big on a grand scale, so I would have to be not in favor of it.
Tom?
I tend to agree with Dick, I would like to see it scaled back, the decking in the rear reduced, so it's pulled back from the lot line, and I'd like to see some, some sort of upper, you know, some plantings there to create some privacy, which seems to be a concern, and you shouldn't want, you know, in a pool, you know what I mean?
We don't want everybody looking and knowing ours anyways.
So that, that's what I would request.
Any else?
No.
Nick?
I'm a little torn, it seems like, like it's bigger than it needs to be. I don't think, you know, going that close with the patio may be an allowance in the bylaw, but on a practical matter, I can't imagine being squeezed on that side with a retaining wall and plantings, and getting a good cozy feeling in the patio on that side, but that's just, just me, but I would be more comfortable to limit the amount of paved area in the decking from the corners of each pool, from the corners of the back, so there's, there's no patio beyond the backside of the pool.
None or just small?
Just no patio on that side, I don't think you need it. Or maybe, maybe a two-foot walk?
Yeah, could certainly half that.
Yeah.
Could we keep it to five, so we have, so brush doesn't get into the pool?
I hate to tell you, but you're going to get it that, no matter how big the patio is. I'd say a couple of feet on that side is plenty, maybe two and a half to, like, like two feet is a little small, but maybe, maybe two and a half feet would be enough to be able to have a walkway around the pool.
Somewhere between two and three feet.
I think I said two and a half.
Yeah, that sounds reasonable.
You're negotiating, or?
That sounds reasonable.
So let me ask you this, if we were hoping to do maybe something right here, like a table with the umbrella there, because right here, it gets really tight with that.
On grass, see?
I don't know, I guess we're going to have to do on grass.
I mean, is, I'm sorry, sir, is your, your main concern is right here, right, where it's so tight to that, and we don't, that makes total sense to get off of there.
We could go even under five, yeah.
To go to your two, two and a half, but maybe let it kind of extend where we have a little more property more towards the side. We're not looking for a huge patio.
You still got a similar situation over here, though, right?
Yeah, maybe in, you know, just in here to have a sitting area for lounge chairs, not, it doesn't have to be on those fences.
I can't see where you're pointing, so I, I'm in a loss, but.
Just popping off the corners that are close to the fences.
We're a country close to that, this area, so, you know, perhaps, you know, you just, you just had some sort of small decking, right?
Yeah, but like you said, cut off on their fences to have more room for trees or whatever.
My opinion, well, just from what I'm looking at, you know, we have to do something to at least compensate the neighbors for their concerns, and I think the back, having that back patio area, whether you wanted to have sitting there or not, I think it would behoove us to have, you have, if you wanted to do sitting, it should be on the other side of the pool, closer to the house.
Okay, maybe in grass?
On grass or whatever, but I agree, I think two and a half feet is probably the maximum that we would, I would be comfortable with on the backside of that pool, for sure.
Mr. Arcton Chapman, can I make a motion? If everybody's done talking?
It wasn't quite, but.
Go ahead then.
I just wanted to finish giving my interview.
You go ahead, I thought you had, yeah.
So I agree with a lot that was said, there's conditions that I would only be comfortable with if we do this. First would be the shed, the second would be plantings, we need, and I'd want to see it on some kind of plan, I think, so we probably have to ask you to come back with something So, we'd probably have to ask you to come back with something that shows what you would really be doing, so that's what we had, but with plantings also in the diagram. And also limit that wall to four feet, the retaining wall. So, between the shed moving, the retaining wall no more than four feet high, plantings, and then a limit to the back patio to two and a half feet, I think would be things that I'd want to see.
On the backside?
On the backside of the pool.
Do a straight line from the line of the pool here, right?
Straight line from the S, straight line out. What that does is it gives a little bit more of the buffer to anything you're gonna do for plantings in the back. And I do believe this is a variance. So, with a variance, there, there has to be some things that we have to also make sure we...
Yeah, no, I'm go, ready to make a, a motion to approve a variance based on the fact that I think this meets criteria for certainly toboggery of a lot and isn't, isn't undue nuisance and so forth and so on. But my comment would be to allow a variance for the property subject to the shed on the southerly property belonging to the petitioner to be moved back onto the site and to meet any setback requirements.
Before permits issued for the pool? Before permits issued for the pool?
I don't care if it's in conjunction or, or I guess...
All right, lots of doing before, let's throw that in.
Before any permits are issued for the pool. That the pool patio to the south, to the rear of the pool in the southeast direction be limited to two and a half feet in terms of the surround patio. That the easterly and southerly lot lines be heavily planted with Leyland cypress or similar evergreen buffer shrubbery of, of at least five foot height. And that the pool area be fenced appropriately with whatever is required by town statute. And I think that covers it for what I'm concerned with. Don't forget something?
Am I allowed to just say one thing?
Sure.
On this backside, the fence is up high already. There's not a lot of intention to, to deal with that. He's got greenery on his side of the fence that already is high, and we weren't thinking of, of putting stuff on that. If you look at the images, you can see his fence is up high.
Not a lot of room anyway.
So, it goes up to fourteen and then he has at least eight, seven or eight.
He has a high fence and then he has greens behind it.
I will, I will amend that to any area that isn't presently, presently vegetated. Thank you.
And again, I mean, ideally, I wouldn't, but I would, I might not be able to supersede his...
Excuse us just a second, I'll make sure I hear this.
Just to paraphrase this better, maybe plantings on the back, backside.
In the back area where there aren't any presently.
Where there aren't any.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can see the picture of the side where they have some.
And I guess that's a motion. I feel, I feel, I feel they meet the criteria necessary for doing a variance, and I do believe we probably do need to do a variance on this. So, we'll have to withdraw the special per, application.
Do I hear a second?
A second. Go ahead, go ahead.
Who did that?
Can I clarify for a minute? Just looking to get new drawings of two and a half foot off the pool on the, was it east, southeast side?
The entire rear side of the pool.
Correct.
Yeah, nine feet, to be honest with you, isn't gonna be enough to give you much patio area usable there anyways. You know, if I was you, I'd be increasing your patio over toward your deck and then using that whole area as your entertainment area. Because people aren't gonna wanna walk around the pool and sit there.
They never do.
Yeah, and that's, that's...
Dick and I both have pools, so we know this.
One thing we will expect is that you'll provide new plans to kind of outline this because we do need to have something in, you know, in the record.
Yeah, I don't think they have to come back again. I wouldn't want them to do, but I think a new plan would be progress.
It should be provided. Yeah, as a condition.
So, who do I present those plans to?
Downstairs to the doors. Okay, so we have, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion?
I think it's a good compromise. I, you know, I, I just, looking at the plan and it's so, it really is really close to the neighbors and, and, you know, I know that people are concerned not only about the proximity for aesthetics, but also for noise, because pools can be noisy at times too. And I don't know what, you know, who the neighbors are or what the situations are, but it's, it's, sometimes it's annoyance.
I agree, and that's...
I grew up with one, so I understand.
And, and, you know, if you have a graduation party for the kids, you're gonna have forty or fifty people out there, you know, it's, it's, it's different than having everybody inside.
If we could fit them in the backyard.
If you could find room to park. I still can't be in favor of this, I'm sorry. I just, you know, I just think the pool's too, too big for the size of a lot. I think it was a smaller kidney-shaped pool or something like that that fit the lot a little better. I would be a little more in favor, but I just, you know, at this point, I, I would have to say no.
What if we, what if we invite you over? I changed my name.
Don't even say things like that.
Especially with that no, I know, I'm sorry, that wasn't funny.
Is there a need to review this at some point in time in the future that didn't meet the needs or put the conditions in?
We're gonna submit it to you, correct?
To the doors?
Right, but to review the conditions, it's talking about. Wait, you have conditions for this, right? So, come back and review and make sure the conditions are met.
All right, well, let, you know, let's talk, we'll talk about that in a second, but we should vote.
Do you vote to re, get rid of the special permit first or do you wait until after you vote on the variance?
Usually we withdraw the second, yeah.
Do it second, right? Yeah. So, we're gonna have to ask you to withdraw the special permit after we vote on the variance. So, we'll start by voting on the variance. Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Campbell? Nate?
Aye.
Aye? I'm an aye. I was reluctant, but I am an aye, so.
Thank you.
In that regard.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
We now wanna, let me just let, let me just vote on, you agree with it, we can remove the special permit request? So, is there a motion to re, remove?
Still move. Second.
Vote, Mr. Martin?
Aye.
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 Aye. Special permit is removed. So, the, the way this works is we will, we will write up something. You have to wait twenty days for any appeals. We'll have something written up and you'll need to take that to the Barnstable County to get submitted on your property and then bring it back and prove that it, it has been submitted.
Need that to get the permits.
Yeah, you'll need that for the permits.
So, we'll get something in twenty days in the mail?
No.
It'll be twenty days after it's filed with the town clerk, so we have to draft it, get it approved, and then file it. So, it'll be posted via email.
It's an appeals period, so if somebody's gonna file a petition in court to appeal it, they have twenty days to do it.
And is that...
Standard.
The neighbors and is that...
Could be.
Anyone can, yeah. So, that, that's the process. If it's possible, you know, as soon as you can possibly give us, you know, some revised drawings so we can put those in the, we appreciate that. But we need to have that in the paperwork as a final submission. And those would show the plantings, the right size of the, of the patio, the shed where it's going to be preferably.
Okay.
And the retaining wall.
Greens.
Okay.
So, the retaining wall is still there right now, which shows, I believe...
Assuming you're gonna have one still on the backside there, so.
The back actually doesn't need one because her side is higher, so that'll be more level if anything.
When I looked at it, I thought it was...
The backside is actually gonna be more of a normal instead of a dip.
Wherever you're gonna put the retaining wall, please make sure that's highlighted.
Thank you.
Pool contractor lined up?
It's been going on for a long time, yeah. At this point...
We've got several we're looking at.
I know some are booked out a year or two, so...
Yeah, I have been.
Well, thank you everyone, sorry for, for delay, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Glad you came.
Thank you.
Yes, you're gonna invite Dick to the pool party. If you weren't here, you wouldn't have it.
Thank you guys, appreciate that.
Doing very well, Mr. Chairman.
I would love to...
Good night, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much.
All right. All right, so let's move on to the next, next petition. It is petition four nine nine seven, N. and E. Welch Revocable Trust, 286 Old Main Street, Yarmouth, Mass. And lot sixty dot twenty two, two seventeen, zoning district RS forty. Applicants seek the special permit per one oh four dot three dot two dash two and/or variance from two, from two oh three dot five for side setback relief to increase height of pre-existing non-conforming structure by twelve inches. Let me tell, I just realized we didn't have, we didn't remove the variance on the first one, but that was my fault. But if you could tell us about your petition, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Who you are and...
Sure, my name is George Davis. I'm with the General Contract and Design Project. The, simply look into, it's a very large, significant project, but most of it's all by right from a firm in standpoint. But we do need relief to raise the structure because we're gonna be putting a foundation under it the whole eight years to get this old structure up out of the ground and, and they all invite, you know, that it's buried. So, that's, that's it. No questions.
So, you're trying to go up by twelve inches, I believe, is what I...
Yeah, I think no more than that.
It's very, it's really, it's an ATC, yeah.
Oh, it's... Yeah, with the parts of it, you know, in fact, part of this project, we're actually tearing off an addition that we built, I don't know, ten years ago, something like that, and rebuilding that.
So, the, the only reason you need relief is because you're going higher on the non-conforming structure that's too close to the lot line?
That's correct.
Is there a full foundation of this type here?
And this, there's a... I mean, it's rubble, it's a mixture, it's, it's, there's a, there's a full basement under about fifty square feet of it.
But you'll be well under the thirty-five feet.
Oh, yeah.
What's the current height now? Do you know?
It's probably at the, I guess eighteen feet or so.
Yeah, it's a single story.
Yeah.
So, they're thirty-five feet if you are.
Dick, you wanna start? No questions?
No, I mean, the only reason he's here is because he needs a foot extra to make a decent foundation under the property, which is logical and meets any criteria we need. And I think this is special permit on this one. So, I, I'm all for it.
Okay.
I agree? Is there a significant amount of rot as well as having it then on the ground so long? You don't know until you lift it up? Find out.
I'll say yes. I don't know. I don't know, Dick.
You haven't been down there?
No. We'll pick it up and then I'll go under it.
How do you pick it up if it crunches when you do, when you do?
Essentially, we pierce the building with steel beams and start lifting it from there. We actually cut the floor assembly away and the floor assembly falls, falls away. Exactly what we did to the...
To your building?
To the church property down the street. Now, my office, we never actually picked it up.
Oh, you demolished it and then...
We demolished parts of it in a certain, yeah.
I think that's all I got.
I don't have any questions. The only request is height and it's the same footprint, so I really don't, I don't have any problem with there are any questions, so. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in support of the project?
We just wanted to hear. That's it. I'm a neighbor to the west, though, I was just curious.
I'm the neighbor across the street and I'd like to speak in approval of it.
Could you give us your name?
Charles and Barbara Adams, we live right across the street.
Excuse me?
Adams.
Thank you.
And I approve the project because I think it's gonna make the house look better and I, if George is in charge of it, I don't have any fears, so.
Is this George?
I look at it right across the street. Probably have to take that tree in the front down.
Oh, I think so.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna lift it out and then put it back?
Not that one. It's not two hundred and fifty years old.
So, we have one vote for George? Do we have anybody else that would like to speak in support of the project?
No, we're good.
All right, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to oppose the project? Hearing none, I close it to public, public comment and open it up to the board for discussion.
I think it's a significant historic preservation because I think that house is in severe threat of self-demolition.
It's really right on the ground.
It's really right on the ground. I, I think it's the best thing, not only for the appearance of the structure, but to save the structure.
Yeah, I think so too.
Anyone else that'd like to say anything? I think I'm in support of it too. I think it makes a lot of sense and wanna keep our historic structures going, so. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to grant as submitted.
Motion to grant as submitted.
Let her go second. You're one of the easiest challenges to make. Good time.
Okay, motion is made. Anybody, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, let's vote. Mr. Martin?
Aye.
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 And aye. So, we, motion approved.
Thank you very much.
As you know, I think you've probably heard us, twenty days for the field period.
Good to see you.
We'll have something written up, we need to take it down to get it submitted to Barnstable and bring it back with proof of submission.
Can I have a copy? But they would provide a copy to me, to the building department.
So, you wanna remove that variance?
Ah, yes. You're, you're okay with the variance? All right, so, trying to motion to remove the variance?
Still move.
Second? Mr. Martin again. And all, all those in favor?
Aye.